Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 11D. Discussion of potentially purchasing a town radar sign. Or signs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilor Hamilton and, uh, Councilor Hamilton asked you to put this on the budget. I've had a citizen who has reached out to me as concerned about speeding on Strawberry Road. I think he's talked to several people on the council. He's talked to our county commissioner. He's talked to the sheriff's department. And he's just not satisfied with the responses he's getting. His solution is that the town buy radar signs. Those solar panel ones they've put up on Strawberry Road to hopefully stop speeders. So, it was asked that I bring this before the board. I can tell you that the cost of these are gonna be anywhere from five to $10,000. Depending on the model that was selected. If it's your pleasure, you do decide to buy one. I would, however, give you something to think about as your manager. Somebody's gotta maintain it. Somebody's gotta move it around. And we don't have a whole lot of staff time to be moving that around. And I'm not sure that it doesn't take a certified law enforcement officer to calibrate it and make sure it works right. So, that's the issue before you. And I would add that DOT did do a study in the area of Strawberry Road that this gentleman was concerned about. And they found that the speed limit there was the right speed limit for that part of Strawberry Road.
Did that study tell us if people are mostly following that speed limit or are not following that speed limit?
I did not see the study, Ms. Robinson. I was just told by DOT that it was the appropriate speed for that part. This is an enforcement issue. We don't have a police department. We're not sheriff's department. We're not highway patrol. I mean, my personal recommendation is we need to kick this back to the sheriff's department. But, it's y'all's pleasure, as with everything. If you want to get authorized to do a budget amendment out of the fund balance, which I say is buy radar sign, then I'll do what you tell me to. But, just consider, somebody's gotta keep it and take care of it. And they require additional funds to do that.
I saw one of them sitting out here on 150 not long ago, but it wasn't operating. So, I was operating one day and the next day I turned by and it was working.
Mr. Robinson, is it really 150 and not strawberry? And it's the one between Strawberry Road and the vineyard? It's kind of a vine curve?
I thought it was strawberry, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, strawberry.
Strawberry.
I think it's.
It's 150.
Yeah. It's between Strawberry side and the 220 side. Oh, no, 150.
Yeah, but it's past.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So, with that said, I don't think this is really our jurisdiction. I think that this is law enforcement and I think it's DOT. We start dipping our hands in there and we're just gonna mess. We, I don't wanna deal with that.
Further discussion?
Well, Mr. Robinson, would you? You know, I had spoken with the county sheriff's office. They actually said they'd increase their presence around there. This is back in around June or July, I think, when that citizen reached out to us. And they actually did increase their presence for a little while. And they're, when I started seeing the signs up more in there. So, if we're not gonna do any sort of sign, maybe at some point, you can just continue to encourage them to be around here. Maybe communicate with that citizen.
Absolutely. I have a contact with sheriff's department. I can express concerns. We can't guarantee they're gonna be there. I mean, they have to prioritize enforcement. But, I can actually let them know your wishes that control that area.
Because with that traffic study, they did say that they recommended an improvement in traffic monitoring enforcement there. So, they said everything was posted, you know, a good spot. But, you know, I think there were, had already done at one point. I think there were maybe did or taken around 15 accidents over a short period of time. So, I get his concern and also get the concern that, you know, we don't wanna take over law enforcement. But, yeah, so as long as you can continue to talk with them, see if we can help with something.
Yes, sir. Further discussion?
So, he did?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 11C, consideration of unified communications telephone system. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and board. So, in your packet, you have consideration for a new telephone system. Now, I am keenly aware that the town recently, I think in the last two years or less, purchased a new telephone contract with ATCOM. So, one of the things the finance officer and I have been diligent about doing is bills come across. There's a lot of them come through my email, either the finance officers. We're scrutinizing every contract. And what I've found is that current contract vendor is overcharging us and we're not getting what we could be getting. So, what you have before you is a proposal for a contract that gives better features for less money. And one of the things that really kinda tips over this is the current contract, as you well know, we're using Gordon House now as an office for parks and recreation. They need a telephone down there for the parks and rec director. And the proposal from ATCOM to add one telephone, which right here, Roddy, got to pay $6,000. That's ridiculous. That's not good governance. And so, I'm recommending, just ma'am.
Golden phone?
I'm not sure, it has to be like. But, I'm recommending we terminate this contract and go with the other company. And that includes that extra phone. And a new phone for them is less than $200. So, that's my recommendation. Any questions on that?
So, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I learned about the pre-audited stamp that when I had the furniture and that must be on everything. Those are pre-audited, same thing with that contract?
No, ma'am. North Carolina General Statute, I'm glad you're aware of that. States that every contract that the town or any county engages in, whether it's an internal agreement or a contract for service, must have a pre-audited stamp, that the finance officer is pre-audited, that the funds have been allocated by this board. I haven't found a pre-audited stamp on any contract that I've come across yet from the old administration.
So, it's being played voiding, right?
It is voiding. That means this contract is not enforceable by a North Carolina General Statute. That's North Carolina General Statute 15928.
So, does that mean we need it?
My, our new finance officer, not my finance officer, is pre-auditing. And there is a stamp on everything because the mayor pretends that, what is this?
Okay.
So, we are following general statutes, but prior contracts do not have the pre-audited stamp. So, therefore, it's a loophole where yours to get out of contracts. So, we won't be overcharged and we can get out of the contract. They won't be happy about it, but.
So, it's easy just to pick it up and say, we're done?
Well, we would give them a written letter. That would be the proper thing to do, but yes, ma'am.
Ms. Robinson, what's the current system cost that we are paying today? So, we have a cost comparison between the new and the proposed?
The current system has cost us $4,063.98. However, when I called them to investigate this contract, they informed me that that would go up at average of seven and a half percent per year due to the licensing. Our system is, the current system is a Mitel system. And Mitel charges for their software every year. And they pass that through this third-party vendor, middleman, if you will, to us. So, we can, it's, right now, it's $4,063. It'll be seven and a half percent more on the average every year. In fact, the salesperson told me there have been years it's gone up 20%. With the proposal in front of you, it's a guaranteed three-year contract with no increases at all, unless we add additional services or funds. And I'd also point out that if we stay with this, we're still gonna need that fund for parks and rec. So, you're adding another $6,000.
So, if the current is 4063 roughly, what's the new?
Well, it would be this $6,000 plus whatever the additional licensing is for this particular phone. Let's see if I can tell. If user license is 186 bucks, mailbox license is 55. So, it'd be a couple of hundred dollars more just to add this annually besides the first initial upfront cost of this phone.
Are you still talking about the old contract that we, I think you're asking?
I'm asking the new one.
New contract.
What is the cost of it?
Yeah, annual. If it's $293.46, that times up by 12.
About $3,600 a year.
Okay, so there is a top savings. The first year, the $1,500 initial expense, the next two are savings?
That's the installation cost of the new system.
And it includes already that additional phone you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
And what kind of additional services are we expected to get for this?
Well, one of the great things about this system, there's two things that really will help the staff is, number one, when the public calls and needs voicemail, it will send an email to that particular, say, the planning director. And it will transcribe that email so he can read that email. It's a transcription of the voicemail that was left. The second thing is, is it gives us soft phone service on our laptops, which all the new staff has, and on our phones, so we can return phone calls to people that appears that we're still in the office. So, we don't have to buy cell phones. They don't have to use their personal cell phones, their personal numbers, and then be exposed. So, it appears they're sitting in their office. So, those are just a couple of features. And it's very scalable, too, for just the cost of another phone, which is about $200 a phone, if we were to need one.
Are there other municipalities or references that you can share that are using this company?
Well, this company, Telco, actually is a local government provider. They, I'm familiar with probably 10 different local governments down in the southeastern part of the state. That's why I reached out and then for a proposal to look at apple to apple against the contract. And no, I don't have any ownership in. Or any stock.
Is, would you flip this off a bit?
No, sir, not.
Any concerns with ceasing the agreement, the contract we have with the public property?
It's technically not an enforceable contract by North Carolina General Statutes. So, I would coordinate, if it's y'all's pleasure to approve the new contract, I would coordinate with the new company to come in and install funds. And I would notify these people that we're canceling their contract.
Is there a clause that if there are issues or services not rendered issued, that we can get out of this 36-month agreement?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the results of the contract that Mr. Robinson described. And we cease utilization of our current system.
I'll second. Ms. Robinson, this motion, any to include anything to give you the approval to cancel the current, or are you good with that?
No, sir, I'm good. I think this gave me the authorization to sign the contract with the new company. I just need to do coordination.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item 11D, application for youth sports grant.
All right, a little lighter. So, myself, city manager, doing some research, we came across a grant. You guys have a look, I can get this, let me see. And there are youth sports grants. It's a rolling application process, about $25,000 for those that travel then. In there, I came up with some dates. I think June 20th to the 22nd. I would think you guys are up in Purple Beach or the Shipyard, or maybe there's a giant old park events down there. My thought would be to host a softball event. We do a lot of baseball here, we go play in softball. And we encourage to bring young ladies there to play softball. My thought would be, I'd ask your guys' approval to apply for it if I were to get it. I have my numbers in there and I know that the max is up to $25,000 in there. My total expenses go over that. But what I don't have listed in there is that all these travel events, you charge a hundred dollar entry fee, right, per team? Michael was trying to get 13, so it's $3,000. You also charge $25 per player coming into the skills competition. I add that up, that's $22.50. And then you charge the entry fee, which is currently not at all terms, right? They show up, it's $10 per adult. To break down simple math, two adults per kid, I came up with about $7,200 in entry fees. With that said, I'm actually at $12,450, which covers my deficit. I don't believe there'd be any loss to the town by doing this. It would be nothing but pure advertising. I could put some, but I feel like Mark on the math, to make us stand out and try to draw some more softball events. No questions?
Questions, discussion?
Is this?
Go ahead. I already asked my question, I know the answer.
Is this June 20th, large-scale softball tournament that's reaching up from North Carolina, Virginia? This is a new event or recurring?
No, 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 this will be new. The town of Summerfield, to my knowledge, has never held an in-house event. The prior portionary director, he's stuck with a period contract now. Or I guess, outside agencies, U triple S, say, Top Gun, Perfect Game, come in and host tournaments. This will be the first one, to my knowledge, in the 10 years I was involved with Summerfield Rec, that we would be actually putting on one of our own.
And if we proceed with trying to get this $25,000 grant, when will we know if we got awarded?
I read through the pack, I also read everything online. They don't really give a timeframe. Everything they refer to says if you give the money in advance, please let them know later, so that they can pre-study to get your money. But, no way does it get a deadline on when you're up to it.
And if you are not awarded the full amount, or maybe you're awarded partial amount, what's your plan?
I'll be honest with you, probably just turn it down. I already have, I have U triple S, their end is already written out. It said they want to have that weekend, they're planning on holding one of the big, what they call national conferences. They're asking me to use that weekend. My revenue projection, we put a $200,000 on rent, but I have a backup plan for the apartment part out. That would be if I did it before.
Correct. And we, and your estimation, I think I heard you say, is different between $25,000 and the 33 that you're projecting, that you would recoup that in the sales?
Correct. I would recoup it in the registration for the teams, for the entry fees of the players. And then if, well, I would hold a skills competition on that Friday night. Generally speaking, Purple Beach, I think they charge $25 per player for the skills competition. That's to cover awards and offset expenses. Typically, you have officials come out there and they're actually scoring the players as they do it, so you have to appoint a judge. But, all that together puts me significantly, I think it's actually $3,731 on a quick estimate. And that's only counting two people coming in per player. I know me and my family, we're at the Purple Beach. I paid five entry fees every single day. It cost me like $300. So, I anticipate, I'm very conservative, I guess.
Is there a timeframe that you are thinking about of when you may not pursue this, if you do not get award? Because this is June 20th, so what is, I don't know, January?
Well, with your guys at Purple, I'd like to send this week.
And if you do not get awarded or notification, is there a timeframe where you're saying this and I'm not gonna pursue this? I'm gonna go around?
I have not set a timeframe. If I had given one, I'd say by March 15th would be my cutoff. Because by March 15th, I need to let U triple S know that they can have that weekend.
Last question, and thank you, Councilor, for giving the mic, so it'd be, and thank you for going through this and putting this together. How does this benefit our citizens in Summerfield?
I think initially it draws a positive light to Summerfield, to bring the community. Like SRA, they have four teams in softball line. But, so does Greensboro Batted Center, prolific houses a lot. They draw, my opinion, the best answer I give is it draws a positive light to the Summerfield area, the community. People would come in and stay in hotels, obviously don't have any. But they'd be staying in hotels in Greensboro. They would have to eat lunch at, like, Subway and Rio, which are our businesses. I think it would just, it would put a positive spin on some of what we've experienced over the last year.
Sort of gives a light back on it, a positive light to, you know.
It would, it would.
It would, it would.
It would, it would.
Something good.
Yeah.
And local kids get to be in a tournament that they don't have to travel for, it's here, it's home.
I go to Shipyard twice a year, almost every year, which is a great place. And I go to Purple Beach every year. My daughter gets to play all sorts. And it puts a positive light on everything, everything of all those locations.
Any other discussion? Does anyone like to make a motion? I make a motion that we give the authorization to proceed on with it.
I'm not a second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Call a question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kuhn, you may just stay, hang out there. Item E, consideration for forming an in-house maintenance department.
So, we're gonna tag team y'all here, Mr. Mayor, Council. So, you have a PowerPoint presentation here behind you. I think most of the council got a tour in the last two weeks of our facilities. And this is a snapshot of what's going on and what we recommend. I do want to speak first about Mr. Kuhn. Not only is he a sports nut enthusiast, but he has a skill set that, he's a licensed home inspector. See, he has a skill set for maintenance. And has been very, very instrumental in saving the town money. We cleared this parking lot yesterday on a tractor, and the other parking lots, that was done without having to hire that out. So, he brings a skill set to the town. So, keep that in mind as we look at this proposal. So, next slide, please, Jeff. So, currently, these are emergent repairs that Kuhn has identified. And they're locations all over town here, are town properties. It's about $16,000 with us doing it in-house. So, between Kuhn's knowledge and Rich's and Scott's, we're able to address these and keep this cost down. This is absorbed in the current budget. So, that's just kind of a snapshot. These are high-risk things that they're addressing immediately. So, we just want to let y'all know about those things. Next slide, Jeff. So, current repairs, we'll go slow here. There's about four pages. This is not all exhaustive, but this is the, on the left side of that column, the blue, it says location and estimates. This is the cost estimate if we were to have to hire outside contractors to come in and do all of these things. And the red is the contractor required. You'll see very little red. The rest of it, we feel like we can do it in-house with Mr. Kuhn and his staff, and the additional staff that we're asking for in this proposal. So, next slide, please, Jeff. So, there's four pages here. And this is, like I said, not all exhaustive. I know one thing that's not on there is the steps out here behind this building, the steps behind Town Hall are peeling paint. They need to be pressure washed and repainted before they go to rusting. And we have to spend even more money on them. So, next slide, please, Jeff. So, you can see there's a lot of money right there that would cost us outside contractors. And that's kind of been our way to address, the town's way to address our maintenance needs. Across town is to hire a contractor. We did very little in-house. So, we're trying to change that philosophy, to do it in-house. And you'll see some cost savings here in that. Next slide, please, Jeff. And I think some of y'all saw some of Mr. Kuhn and his staff's handiwork down at Gordon House. It was just sitting dormant and we turned that into an actual office. It's been repainted for a couple of hundred dollars in paint and some grease and elbows and stuff. So, next slide, please. So, these are annual tasks and assignments that a proposed maintenance department would be able to handle in-house year over year. And then there's the stuff that just comes up every day. Say that y'all decided to do, like, this paint color in this council chamber here. We could get it painted in-house and we would not have to hire a paint contractor. If you hadn't had to hire a paint contractor in here, you'd probably be looking at probably $3,000 to $5,000. It's about $250 a square foot for a painter. So, these are the things year over year. For instance, I'll call your attention to the third item up there, grounds, the multi-vision, the playgrounds. We spent $15,500 have a contractor bring us vultue and put it out in our playgrounds last year. Our estimate is if this proposal is approved by y'all, we'll be able to do that for about $2,500 a year, just the cost of the vultue. And we have to re-vultue a lot of things. So, next slide. So, currently, we have three positions. We have the director of parks and recreation, that's Kuhn. Part-time grounds worker, that's Scott. And then the maintenance technician, which is Rich. Rich and Scott were the ones working before Kuhn was hired and was starting to do all the wonderful work here at the park and some of the deferred maintenance and stuff. Next slide, please. So, here's what we're requesting. Go ahead and, next, Jeff. So, first of all, where's the money gonna come from? What we found is, is through research, is that the past administration was not charging the proper fees for the athletic field. Y'all have a fee schedule that you approved every year in your annual budget. They were not following that fee schedule. That's a direction from y'all. We were only bringing in somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 in fees for the Summerfield Athletic Park. I'm just gonna talk about the athletic park for now. So, you can see that second line, the projected this year, and Kuhn already has it reserved in a waiting list for just about every weekend. And I made him back these numbers down. It actually came in at the mid 140s. But, we're projecting $125,000 that the Summerfield Athletic Park will bring in this season from March until November. Is that right, Kuhn?
Yeah.
And that's conservative. That does not include the blue down there, the multipurpose fields, the baseball fields for Evolution, private rentals, community center rentals, press box rentals, concession stand, and the sheltered house, sheltered houses and amphitheater and this building. This building also is on it. So, that's not even counting that. So, that's even more relevant if you look at that. Our current expenses over last year actually came in at $210,000. These have been triple-checked by finance officer. And again, we're being conservative here. We feel like these current expenses can be handled in-house by our staff if the proposal is approved. That'll save $189,000. So, total, you got a bucket of money of $314,000. So, remember that number if you're, next slide, please. So, what we're asking for is basically three full-time positions. Currently, we pay $90,000 a year to cut grass. $90,000 a year in contracts. That contract, we can get that up because it was not pre-audited. In fact, it hasn't been renewed in approximately 10 years. So, two of those positions are grounds workers. They'd be working full-time. And you say, well, what are they gonna do when they don't cut grass? That's where we're gonna catch up on a lot of this maintenance. So, in the winter months, we would have these employees cross-trained and working on projects that Kuhn sets priorities on. And then the maintenance person would be more like a handyman. We have repairs that need to be done to our fishing pier, tiers, actually, out here, and other woodworking projects here, and other projects across town. The mayor called me yesterday about a bridge off of Strawberry Road that was damaged where a tree fallen over it. I reported it, the planning director and I did, yesterday. I got an email today that we may, may be responsible for part of that repair because it's part of the A and Y trail. So, this is something where if we had a handyman, we could put them in the mix there to try to cut down the cost on that. The four grounds workers at the bottom are basically seasonal positions. Those are for running the parks. Those parks have to be, you have to have somebody there on the weekends. Ball's run in 16 hours a day, Saturdays and Sundays. And the fields have to be prepped, they have to be ready, the gates have to be open, the gates have to be closed. They have to be there for maintenance, they have to be there for lights, so on and so forth. So, those four positions also would be in this proposal. We already do those every year, but just for transparency. So, we're really asking for three full-time positions and continue to funding those part-time. Did I say that right, Kuhn?
Yes, you were right, Kuhn.
So, next slide?
Can I ask?
Just ma'am, go back for it.
So, just clarifying that those four part-time positions, that's something we've done in the past? We've had?
We've had seasonal workers.
We've had six.
We've had seasonal workers just right.
I didn't even argue that the last, since June, I was your seasonal worker. Myself and SRA staff came up and then ultimately built the city in order to make the tournaments on which we function. So, unofficially, you had them. They were just SRA, myself and then the people I could work with. So, unofficially, you had them. They were just SRA, myself and then the people I recruited, Dustin Barnett, my son, et cetera, to come up here and actually work the fields. Otherwise, the turn is worth all the work.
But prior to this past summer, did we help?
I can't speak for fact. I can only speak from what I heard, is that the prior director of Parks and Recreation had nephews that came up, and they prep the fields all the weekends.
In the, in the past, oh, I believe years ago, I was working here part-time. So, I worked all the tournaments, weekends, and everything. I think in the past we have.
So, in order to start a maintenance department, there's a certain amount of equipment that we need. This is a list, kind of a breakdown of equipment that would be needed to basically, if you wanna say, get in the business of maintenance. And so, this is some of it, and then just one more. Next page. One of the things that we're really excited about that's gonna cut down on overtime is to put at least one auto gate at the front of SAP if this proposal's approved. And that will allow us to allow the teams to get in there early and be able to close it up through electronics and Wi-Fi and those types of things. We can call attention to the third line down there, a new vehicle. There will be a new vehicle needed. That's actually on your capital improvement plan for 2025. And yes, it's needed. You know, we'll, in the proposal on the last page, there's a trailer in there. We would be hauling rock down to the dog park. That road right down needs maintenance. We can hire a contractor. It's gonna cost a lot more. We can do it in-house. So, you need a bigger truck to haul mulch, to haul dirt, to haul equipment, to haul rock, so on and so forth. So, and that is state contract, that same truck. I have one, so I can speak authority of that. That's an eighty-five thousand dollar truck. That's state contract pricing right there for 2025 for a month. So, that equipment needed to get started would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, the question asks, where are you gonna get that from? We have currently, in our current twenty-four, twenty-five budget, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in line item four, the Summerfield Community Park, SCP, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not sure what that was budgeted for. But what I do know is, we can, with y'all's authorization, we can buy all the equipment we need, and we can do all the repairs that we need to do down here and fix all those fishing piers and, and stuff in-house and a lot of these other things. So, that's where the money for the equipment will come from. Next slide. So, the cost, the total cost with forensics, again, it's been checked by the finance officer in the eye, is two hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, for the employees we're asking for. You saw that number, three fourteen, so if you minus that, you're looking at a positive flow of sixty-four thousand dollars. So, that's the proposal. Will we entertain questions, anything? And I think most of you have seen the maintenance needs. We took you around intentionally so you could see it with your eye. It wasn't conceptual. There's a long list of stuff that needs to be done. As a continual thing. We're continuing. And I'll call your attention to that within two years, we're gonna have the A and Y trail. We have Van Dair, and we're gonna have a water tank, and we've got to maintain that. So, every time we take on a new project, we need to be cognitive as a team, meaning the board and the management, that we're gonna have to maintain that somewhere. And this, and we'll be staffed up to do that. So, questions?
So, what's the ask?
The ask is to authorize us to hire those three current positions. And part-timers, when he needs them, when the season starts, and authorize us to do a budget amendment for that equipment, which is a little bit.
So, go from SCP to a new capital?
We'd put in a new line item. Equipment of one seventy-five. So, what, the equipment, you asked what the number would be, one seventy-five? One seventy-five. So, we do not have existing contracts for mowing and maintenance? We do, but they're not valid. One, they haven't been renewed. They expired. Two, they don't have the pre-audity status.
And how many of them are there?
I don't know. As we come across them and stuff, and we're getting invoices, we're checking them as quickly as we can. And I'm not making excuses, but y'all remember, I've only been here three months yesterday. As, as we're working through them, we're finding these kinds of things, and we're bringing them to your attention.
So, you don't know how, I'm sorry, I have one second question to that. So, you, the next question, you won't know it is, how much money is attached to each one of those contracts? And I understand you don't have that, that you're accumulating that. Can you keep a record of it so we can see? And again, show the citizens what the savings is?
Yes. I could tell you out of that hundred and eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand of that is a mowing contract or a mowing service. It's mowing. And so, basically, that's almost two full-time people right there. And then we, but the, the benefit of this is, is that you have winter months where you don't have to cut grass. And so, they can be doing other things. They can be doing all these maintenance things. We got a lot of painting. You know, we got a lot of pressure washing. If you look at the new sign, and not the new sign, but the sign out at the athletic park, it hasn't been pressure washed in years. You could barely rig it. I mean, we need to take care of what we got. And it's like a car. If we don't ma, if you don't maintain a car, it's gonna break down. It's gonna cost us more later. And it's just not what the citizens deserve, in my opinion.
How much mowing is there? Because Mr. Doggett takes care of the sun property, he balances it.
He takes care of a part that he does, and, and that is about, I don't know, twenty acres? Eight acres, okay.
Do we have some more you wanna know?
He does that a couple of times a year for the benefit. Mr. Doggett does that as a benefit to the town for the right to grow hay on that. And I will say that he was very forthright. My first meeting, the first week on the job, I just said, I wanna be very transparent for that. So, well aware of that. But we've got a lot of mowing. We've got a lot of weed eating. The eight, all the way down the A and Y trail, we have some responsibilities right now, down under two-twenty, that's ours. We have all the athletic park. We have all the community park. We have all of the Gordon property, if you will, where the water tanks proposed to go, and we have Town Hall. So, there's a lot of landscape and stuff. That's why we're asking for two positions. In the summer, it's gonna take two people. Some, some, or within the forty-hour, to get that set up.
Earlier, you said that the contracts were invalid or, what did you say, what did it begin?
Unenforceable.
Okay. So, so, from the other side, from the party side, we're not, not enforceable?
They have no recourse to us as a town. So, it's, it's a law that most contractors don't know, but I happen to know it because of my training. And as I'm going through contracts, you're finding that we can get out of any contract if it's beneficial to the town because it's not been pre-audited. If it had been pre-audited and everything, we'd have to adhere to that contract. But that's not what we're finding with our contracts.
Would any, will any of these companies that we're, we're getting contracts with, that might interest you in this later?
It would be bad, but, I mean, the law's the law.
How often are we supposed to renew contracts, like, for mowing or, like, is there a, a best practices?
Not that I'm aware of. Usually, two to three years is as far as you wanna go out on a contract, because some things change. And they don't usually wanna go out long because inflation and expenses go up.
So, if that, if the mowing hadn't been re, contract hadn't been renewed in ten years, does that mean the price hadn't gone up in ten years?
That's what I understand. It hadn't gone up in the price in a while.
If that's something we need to check in on, okay.
Well, that would be up to them to ask for price. I mean, that, that, actually, the staff was being a good steward. I'm not gonna go to, I'm not gonna go to you as a contractor and say, hey, you need to be charging us more money. If I'm the town manager, I'm gonna get the best I can for the people. So, I wouldn't put that off as a negative light on the past.
I thought it would not, but it, there just wasn't a contract for it. Was there some when the prices had increased and you had record, that the prices had increased, there was just not a new contract?
That's, that's why I asked.
I wasn't aware of that. In your presentation, you listed a, an abundant amount of repairs. Is, is that a normal amount of maintenance? It's a little hard for me to answer. I, I mean, I look at stuff, and Coon looked at stuff, and there's stuff that hasn't been done in years. And, and I don't know. I, I'll, I'll re, I'm not trying to throw anybody up the bus here, but you remember the day that I came here for my in-person interview. I walked out on that porch, and I asked you, Councilman Clay. I said, when was the last time this place was pressure washed? Now, this is our community center. This is y'all's council chamber. That's not what I expect and what I will demand out of staff if y'all approve this. We have great crowning jewels of property, and we need to take care of them, or we need to get rid of them, in my opinion.
Which, by the way, perfect example is that Gordon House, it's been sitting for so long, and it looked great. I couldn't help but smile all the time getting it toured. I don't know if you guys will ever let the community see it. I'm sure, make it available with Coon. But it looks so good in that house. The changes in the paint and the cleaning and decorated it. It's off, it looks really good. It's nice to see an old house that we own.
Uncle Cat, yeah, he decorated it with his own money.
Thank you. So, it, it looks good.
Still on the color.
I made note in your presentation that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you said that we were not charging for the rental fees of the recreational park correctly. They were not filing, we were just, we're not filing the instructions by council. Can you elaborate? Why, why would we not do that? So, I'll give you a turn, but, um, let me give you the general statute thing. So, every year in the budget, y'all set a fee schedule for different services of the town. That's normal in every town. In my last town, if you wanted a scoop of dirt, we'd been doing it for twenty years. We'd bring you a scoop of dirt for X amount of money. So, there's a fee schedule. That fee schedule needs to reflect at least what it cost us to do it. Otherwise, I don't think we should go backwards in, in most cases. That fee schedule was not being adhered to according to the council's direction. So, when we should have been bringing in over a hundred thousand dollars a year at this SAP, we were bringing in less than twenty because we weren't charging the people using the field. Yet, the citizens, on the backs of the citizens, we are paying for all the maintenance out there and extra stuff, which was way exceeding twenty thousand dollars. Do we have any idea why we will not charge you?
So, my name?
Yes, sir.
Um, and then, if I step back to my prior role as President, SRA. I, I was contacted several times where things, things, I, I think there was a lack of willingness to reach out and ask for help. And so, the way to do that was to reach out to the renters, to our customers, and ask them to chip in, in, in help. And maybe a prime example, one was dragging and striking the fields for rec games that occurred Monday through Friday. There was not enough manpower to do it. There was not enough time in the day to do it with the amount of repairs that needed to happen. The other tasks needed to occur. Therefore, contact was made with me. I make, I contact one of my guys. SRA now pays. We send a guy up there. He has access to the equipment for the town. He drags the fields. He lines the fields. And then it's deducted off my total bill at the end. So, the amount of revenue, you see on the revenue line, is significantly lower, but it's because that lack of willingness to reach out and ask for help caused all these organizations that are using our property to come in and, and chip in, even with the field striking this prior fall. We don't have the ability, we don't have the ability or the time for somebody right there in line a soccer field. So, therefore, Soch United Football League, they make an offer to say, hey, we'll come in. You let us rent the field, and we're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna be striking it for you. We need that to happen because there's other organizations that are also using the field. It, it works out to where, okay, he's now utterly rent it free, but he's also providing this twenty-three-dollar a gallon of paint to come out there every two weeks and strike the field. It was a lot of gentleman's agreement in order to get a task accomplished. Whereas, my goal is to come in and not ask these organizations for help, but provide a professional service to them. I want them to come out here, and I want them to pay the rental fee, but I don't want them to walk away and say, wow, this park is nice, and we didn't have to put in anywhere to do it. By the manpower and the equipment I need, I can provide that service to the community.
And do you think that difference in fee, asking for a higher fee now, less bartering, those types will be agreeable?
Great question. So, I went ahead and I reached out to, to some of our customers that we've already dealt with. Summerfield Rec Association, number one. I also reached out to USSA, Tanya. I spoke with Carter Catley. He's in, what's he got, Top Gun right now. Mary's running Top Gun softball. I spoke with all of them. I explained what I would like to see happen. I'm not going out to hammer anybody. I'm going out to try to save the customers we currently have. It's easier to retain customers than find new ones. So, I'm going out and I'm saying, here's what, here's what I'm shooting for. Long as council agrees with me. Here's what I'm shooting for is to come out, look at our total number, charge it at seventy-five percent this year. Twenty twenty-four is, or twenty twenty-five, sorry, seventy-five percent of the total value is what I expect you to pay. I'm gonna bill you quarterly to make sure that we're staying on top of payments. When we get to twenty twenty-six, my goal is to hit you at a hundred percent. Hundred percent of what the council had previously said. Let's get them to where they're supposed to be. When we get to twenty twenty-seven, we need to raise rates. I've done a little bit of looking into it. For example, High Point, they currently charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars a game. We're charging eighty. We're losing fifty dollars right off the get-go. I had the athletic director, and I won't mention her name, but he told me straight up in my meeting, he laughed at me and said, you guys aren't charging me enough. You know that, right? And of course, I asked. I said, why would you, why would you be asking me to raise your rates? His answer was, because if you don't raise rates, you're bringing in riffraff. They're gonna tear up your park. We don't want that to happen. I, I want a professional service from you guys. Twenty twenty-seven is my goal to say, let's raise rates, not for community center, not for the other stuff, but at least for my ball fields. The ball fields and the soccer field, let's retain the customers we got. I spoke with them. I can tell you, all of them are very content in that number.
So, you're not asking us to raise rates. We're just gonna stick to the rates that we are on.
And only have a seventy-five percent pay for this year. And then next year, go up to the hundred percent. Hundred percent of what they were supposed to be. I'm not asking to raise rates. Twenty twenty-seven, we need to, we need to come in with a proposal to raise rates to get them to where they're competitive with what, Oak Ridge, Stokesdale, High Point, Greensboro, Carroll Island, prolific, what all these other ball parks are charging.
We'll look that good. We will look that good to be able to charge.
Hundred percent. If you, even if you gave me everything today, I would tell you, I'm looking at twelve to eighteen months before I can go through here. And by no means am I saying the, the prior, the prior staff in my position came in and didn't do anything or neglected. From my home inspection experience and the cannibal instrument, you're looking at ten years lifespan. Right? I got broken sinks over there. They're ten years old. That's what happens. Stuff breaks. Without the funny, without the money to fix it, I'm, I'm sitting here, you know, going, I don't have the money and I don't have the people, so we're matching contract and out vendors. You know, I'm calling a company and then change the receptacle. They charge twelve hundred dollars. And we have numbers that actually backed it up to change the recept, change punters' receptacles. But, you know, the, currently, we're setting on, just, just lifespan of equipment. We're setting on almost every external bathroom that we own has no heat in it. I have a space heater. Myself and Rich have installed space heaters to keep water lines from freezing. These sub, sub-freezing temperatures, one water line goes, we're gonna have massive repairs. But every, every heater's broke. Not one functions. I didn't say not one. There are a few that do produce heat, but the majority of them do not function. But again, it's lifespan. It's just the lifespan. We're out. They're ready to be replaced.
Also, I mentioned to the council that we would be canceling our maintenance service, custodial service. I think it's about eight hundred dollars a month they get charged. They're gonna charge us, which is about ten thousand dollars a year. And literally, you can ask anybody here from the Town Hall staff. They're not in Town Hall two hours. We would absorb that with our own staff, and he would rotate them among the staff. Rich and Scott, they clean the bathrooms. They've been doing it. I mean, that's, that's what they do. And so, he would just rotate that among the staff. So, we would absorb that too. So, right there is another ten thousand. There's a hundred thousand dollars right there between your mowing and your custodial services. You know, I think we'll get a better job too, because they just hitting the highlights with the dustpan and dumping the trash. Does we care if we work for the city?
Hey, I appreciate your answer to my question. I understand your plan. It makes sense to have a seventy-five percent to try to get them to a reasonable amount, right? And it's not all at once. However, that is not what the fees say. And so, we're going against what council's already proved. As a fee, we're giving a twenty-five percent discount. Again, I'm not, I'm not faulting the plan, but we're not, we're not going, we're going against the wishes of the council. I think that's a question that we need to talk through, if that's true to the plan. Either the fish should reduce the rate, or have a promotion, or, or something, that that's something we wanna be legit and make sure that we are charging every single renter fee the same amount. No good, no services, everything above board and legit. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. You would need to, we would, part of your motion would be to allow us to charge seventy-five percent, to amend those fees, seventy-five percent for rental facilities out there.
All rental facilities or just athletic park?
Just athletic park.
So, basically, with the bar, the situation, there, that's what their fees come down to, seventy-five percent.
From previously?
It's a lot lower than that. So, it's, you can, so, what you're saying is, based on them doing all the bartering and the field services, then with their grant, they were paying is actually a lot lower than seventy-five percent. So, that, from here to seventy-five cent, or seventy-five percent is a big step, and then you take them to another big step.
Further discussion, everyone, make a motion.
All right, yeah, I have further discussion. You probably have to make a motion. Think a way. In your research and your analysis, have you factored in the futures?
In your research and your analysis, have you factored in the futures of personnel needs based upon the A and Y, Bandera, huge project that's coming? Is this the same amount of people that you're going to need today? Or are you projecting additional staff in your discussion?
That's a hard question to answer, Councilman Clay.
We know the projects.
I do know the projects, but I don't know utilization. Definitely the A and Y, Water Trail, we can definitely absorb that with current proposed staffing. Bandera, right now, we were having this discussion, we're going to have to run somebody over there every day, at least, to dump trash cans, check on things, clean the bathrooms and that kind of stuff. But utilization gets up and we're using more and we, you know, we don't know, until we know the utilization. It's sort of like that second bathroom that we cut out, we're going to wait till utilization. If we do, I think it would be a part-time position, a seasonal position, because I don't think people are going to use it year-round nearly as much. But we, we think right now that we can absorb Bandera, but until we know the actual utilization, I'm not going to stand here and lie to you because.
Have you factored in, because you're acquiring more equipment, now there's more maintenance, calibration, whatever you do, you factor that into analysis?
Everything's going to be brand-new, so that's going to be something that we're going to have to put some money in maintenance. We'll be asking for more in future years, but everything's going to be brand-new to our equipment.
Have you considered a combination plan where you have maybe not quite as many, three, you asked for three full-time employees? Maybe one and a half, and have some type of a combination of additional contractual service?
The number's going to wash, I mean, with one and a half people, that's not even enough to do the mowing. But if you, if you watch our mowers, they got two people here mowing all the time, when they're just doing the mowing. And that's going to take those people out, you know, the whole mowing season. We all know what the mowing season is here. That maintenance guy's going to be basically working by himself with one part timer, doing maintenance.
That was kind of something I was thinking, is there any way to start out with one or two full compositions and one to three seasonal part-time? See how things go this summer, and then if we need to add somebody, add somebody, be a full timer, additional part timer that graduated to it?
I kind of almost think the opposite, like, let's get some people in, let's get this stuff done. Like, we have so many needs right now that I want to get people, let's get it done. Like, if we start with one person, I mean, that's just going to take so much longer.
But if we start with two full-time?
But if they're telling us they need three for this, then I, my opinion is, give them what they're asking for. We have the money for it, it's going to cover it, so this is what, they, they feel like they need three people to do this, let's not start them off under that.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I know Councilwoman Clay is, is, you're making a motion for, this is a really huge decision with a really big investment.
We are committed to governance.
We are. It would be, to me, it'd be beneficial for, for us to have a little bit of time to digest this and talk with you, maybe both of you individually or together, and sort of understand this a bit more, really look at your, at your cost analysis that you have presented, but. And there's quite a bit of ask that you add, more than the three full-time employees. So that motion, what you do, it would be, you talk about pricing, you talk about the full-time employees, the amendment, it'd be, I think it'd be beneficial to.
To put this off for another?
Put this off for at least one more.
Is this pretty concrete?
I'm very intrigued, I'm very, very, I'm, I will send notes.
But I feel like we have the time to deal with this. We already went through the tours, we met with them about the numbers. If you have questions, you need to think about it.
I have. Only thing I've seen is a beautiful Gordon House that did an amazing job. Hey, this is the first time I've actually seen the numbers.
Yeah, that sounds really, I mean, it sounds good. I kind of, Keith, I just haven't had a lot of time to think it through. I mean, everything about it sounds good, right? That's why I just want to know is.
We're kind of, I want to answer your question about, can we wait another month? We're kind of under the deadline, we've got to hire some people, get the park up to speed, and we're running out of time, the first tournament is when?
So soccer had tryouts last week for one team. Schools start here, right by my second, third week of February. I've already started purchasing stuff to fix things. Now, without manpower, I can not fix what I can fix before they start. Some of them things on that one slide you showed you, we've already had some hip injuries, we've had fractured legs, we've had global sockets crushed. Some of those things, I mean, they have to be addressed, or rightfully so, I'm going to shut the field down. I can't knowingly, at SRA, I mean, I know the girl fracture leg, I know for a fact. It's, it's on the town, the whole of the map, it's your guys' property. Likely so, I'm not going to open that field until that issue is fixed. But the time crunch is coming quick. Soccer will start in February, fields are already rented, schools begin, they have tryouts, they start games. Baseball will begin the first Monday of May. And they'll hit it running. I still got a dugout over there with the hole in the top, like a bathroom sink that doesn't function, the handle's ripped off.
Do you think you'll even be able to find people to fill those roles if that's within that time?
Great question.
I asked him that when I had my.
That's going, you did, and that is going to be, I guess, on my challenge. I've had some people that I do know, some from SRA, prior police department employees, that reached out saying that they're ready to make a change in their life, and they are looking for a move. I know they're qualified. I was recruitment officer at USCG my last year there, my job was to find young people who want to be the police. It's a task that you would be putting back on me. If we crunch it, we kick it back, I've explained to Twig, my schedule will change, I'll be working two to ten because somebody's got to open and close those bins every night, and we have players up there every night of the week. So the, the time is taken before this season begins.
So, yes, you're right. And we're going to hire contractors to do stuff instead of using our own staff, which is going to end up costing us more money in the long run.
So like, as I mentioned, it could take time to get staff. Regardless of this gets approved or not, you need to have a backup plan.
Well, I think, to my knowledge, current backup plan is, I guess, we can keep rolling the way we're going. But we can keep paying ninety thousand for oil, and keep paying eight hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars a month to have, cause keep me coming for an hour, two hours. Fix what I can fix as I go until I exhaust my budget on making repairs and then make logical decisions to not open stuff for safety concerns.
And you could. And get back to the gentleman's agreement on renting the fields?
Yeah, ideally, I'm back to that gentleman's agreement, I'll be calling SRA and see if they'll chip in, to go up there and help striding line fields, drag fields, use our equipment. That's going to be my only option, is resort back to the way we did before, or literally don't open.
Which, correct me if I'm wrong, that may still occur because it may take time to get the staff.
But you said you got some folks there.
I have some folks that are already lined up, they're interested. I got one young man, he's in college, he wants to be one of my Fall Weekend Warriors. He wants to be one of the guys to come in and help on the weekends and prep the tournaments. I got three or four, I've already, I've already tried to start stacking, just in preparation. Hire people does take time.
I, I'm not opposed, I'm letting everyone know, I'm not opposed to this. But this is a huge decision, which you're putting on us in a very short amount of time. And you're, now you're saying, you're putting stressors and pressure, that I got to have an answer now. And that doesn't suit well with me. I would like the opportunity to have conversations, talk through this, and, and make sure that we are allocating and using the taxpayers' money appropriately.
Do you have to advertise those jobs? I have a question. Tim, what do you think of this?
Well, it's a very good presentation, very thorough. Appreciate the presentation very much.
But what do you think of this idea? Do you, are you for it, against it?
Well, it sounds like a concept, you know, but. Buying equipment creates new maintenance, hiring employees, even though it might be a savings on the front end. Employees get increases every year, so, you know, it's putting something in motion that continues to grow. But, you know, you have to ask yourselves a question, where are we at as a town? And what is it time for? So this could be the time for that.
Do you feel like it is?
I, I mean, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't dug into it. It's a good presentation, very good, very thorough.